I will call our meeting to order. Please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call.
For the last time this year, Chairman Quackenbush.
Present.
Legislator Diamond.
Present.
Legislator White. Legislator Beniac.
Here.
Legislator DeChasse.
Here.
Legislator Wheeler.
Here.
Legislator Isabel.
Here.
Legislator Patel.
Here.
Legislator Kelly.
Present.
Privilege of the floor. Public comment, anyone from the public wishing to speak? Hearing none. I'd just like to open the meeting tonight. Wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. I guess what I'd like to also say is I think that December 15th last year, I wouldn't think that we would be this far ahead of the game our first year into it. And I want to commend each and every one of you for all your hard work. I think you've done a great job in our first year. All the staff that we have, Doug, Cheryl. And I want to really, I know he just left, but Matt Ossenford, I think, is our county executive, our first county executive, has done an outstanding job in leading us, in leading this county in our first year of existence. So I hope that we can, well, I know Matt used to say at the beginning, at the beginning of it all, he said, "Well, the honeymoon has just begun," and, you know, he's waiting for the honeymoon to get over. And you know what? I think the honeymoon's been over for a long time. The marriage already started. It's committed. Everybody's doing, I think, the right thing and the right job. And anyway, I commend him for that. And all of you as well. Approval of the minutes in the previous meeting? We have none because we just had our meeting and Cheryl's not that fast. Approval of the budgetary transfers? Motion?
Motion.
Bob, Terry, Bob. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain? Unfinished business? We have none. New business? Just want to remind you that Resolution 263, we're going to be skipping from '62 to '64 because we already did 263 at the other meeting. That was the animal control law. All right, Resolution 259, it's a resolution amending the 2014 operating budget. We are and Diamond were the sponsors. Discussion on 259? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 260 is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign a renewal agreement with transportation of Fulton County, for Fulton County veterans, sponsors, Patel and Wheeler. Discussion on 260? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution authorizing the county executive to sign children with the special health care needs contract, sponsors Patel and Wheeler. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 262 is a resolution appointing members to the committee on county roadways, supervi, oh, supervisors, I'm still at it, aren't I? Legislators Wheeler and White. Discussion?
I'd just like to say this is a lucky night for Supervisor Sullivan. He gets appointed to two committees tonight. Lucky you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you for serving. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 264 is a resolution appointing member to the planning board, District 6. We need a sponsor in a second? Duke, Barb? Discussion on 264? Does that need a, I don't have the resolution in front of me, I'm sorry. Does it need an amendment?
No.
Okay. You just missed all the good things I said about you, Matt. Anyway, watch it on the tape. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 265, resolution approving final Montgomery County Health and Insurance Trust dissolution plan. I would like to sponsor that as the president. Joe, you're on there, you're sponsoring it with me. We had our last meeting. Discussion, just to let you know, this is the final resolution needed. All money has been dispersed, with the exception of, Joe, help me out, $30,000, $30,000, $40,000, which is just, and once the final bills are tallied, which aren't much, that'll be dispersed between the city. The city has the same resolution, I believe they're trying to get it on for tonight. Once we do this, done deal, over with. Sean, anything to add? Okay, Sean is on with us, so. I would look for a full board on this.
Full board.
All in favor, good. See you later. 266, resolution authorizing the county executive to sign a contract, general liability and other pertinent insurance coverage. Wheeler, White, sponsors. Discussion on 266? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 267 is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign renewal agreement with HM Life Insurance Company in New York. Isabel and Wheeler are the sponsors. Discussion on 268? I'm sorry, 267? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 268 is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign agreement, third-party drug and alcohol and CDL testing administration with Eastern Medical Support, sponsors were White's and Wheeler. Discussion on 268? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 269 is a resolution authorizing county executive to sign agreement for Kronos, time clock maintenance, M&amp;M Hayes, sponsors were White's and Kelly. Discussion on 269? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 270, resolution amending the 2014 operating budget. Discussion, right. The sponsors were Wheeler and Isabel. Discussion on 270? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 271 is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign a renewal agreement with IQS, sponsors Wheeler and Beniac. Discussion on 271? Kerry?
Can I just have, I should have said this in the committee, but can I just have in the resolve after records management system contract, can we insert which with IQS?
Just those three letters?
Whoever the company is, I assume.
With IQS.
With IQS? Can that be a typo?
Sure.
Is it a member or can we just do a typo? Typo, okay.
It's in the heading, so.
All right. Any further discussion on 271? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 272, resolution establishing a new rate of housing inmates. Isabel and Wheeler are the sponsors. Discussion on 272? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 273, resolution appointing member to the audit committee, oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute. Resolution approving abstract of audit claims. Wheeler, Patel were the sponsors. Discussion on 273? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 274 is a resolution appointing member to the audit committee. Wheeler, Beniac were the sponsors. Discussion on 274? Thank you, Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 275 is a resolution approving re levy of delinquent school taxes, village tax, water rents and sewer taxes. Wheeler and Patel were the sponsors. Discussion on 275? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 276 is a resolution adopting introductory local law, H of 2014, a local law to establish a motor vehicle use fee in Montgomery County. Office of the Legislature, Quackenbush, Diamond were the sponsors. Discussion on 276? No discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Ryan and Bob. Martin is abstaining. Everyone else, yes? Pass? Resolution, 277 is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign agreement, Office for the Aging, Patel, Wheeler were the sponsors of 277. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 278 is a resolution authorizing the county executive to sign agreement with Soil Conservation District. Wheeler and Beniac were the sponsors. Discussion on 278?
Just a typo, the title should say Soil and Water Conservation District, not just Soil.
Okay. On 278, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. 279 is a resolution amending the 2014 operating budget. Sponsors were Isabel and Wheeler. Discussion on 279? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution adopting, this is Resolution 280, I'm sorry, adopting the 2015 to 2020 capital program. Sponsors Wheeler and Beniac. Discussion on 280? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 281, resolution, a bond resolution of the county of Montgomery, New York, dated December 16, 2014, authorizing the construction of a new wing for the public safety facility of the county, estimating the aggregate cost thereof to be $3.5 million, appropriately appropriating set amount therefore and authorizing the issuance of $3.5 million serial bonds of the county to finance said cost. Sponsors Quackenbush, Isabel. Discussion on 281? Full board? 282, bond resolution of the county of Montgomery, New York, dated December 16, 2014, authorizing the acquisition of a new emergency radio system for the county, estimating the aggregate cost thereof to be $2.8 million, appropriating set amount thereafter or therefore and authorizing the issuance of $2.8 million in serial bonds of the county to finance that cost. Sponsors Isabel and Wheeler. Discussion on 282? Hearing none, full board? Resolution 283 is a resolution appointing Democratic Election Commissioner, Board of Elections. Sponsor on 283 was Beniac, Patel. Discussion? Hearing none, with the extension of Duke, all others, full board? Resolution 284, is that true? Resolution, 284 is a resolution confirming appointments to the Montgomery County Ethics Board, White's and Kelly. Sponsors of 284, discussion?
Could you read the names just for everybody that's pressing in?
You're really putting me on the spot here, Joe. I don't have it in front of you. Douglas Landon, Robert McMahon, Robert Sullivan, Michael McKenny and James Park.
I just wanted to say something about, they're all good guys, I just want to say something about Mike McKenny, who's always been very much involved in political politics, and I'm glad to see that he's out.
Yeah, a good, great guy. Okay. Any further discussion on 284? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution setting the date and time of the organizational meeting. Resolution 285, sponsors were Kelly and White's. The date and time, discussion, the date and time will be 11, 11 o'clock, January 1st, 2015. Any further discussion? Full board?
Full board.
Good. Resolution 286, resolution authorizing priority wastewater treatment plant project, critical maintenance, FMCC. Wheeler, Isabel were the sponsors of 286. Discussion on 286? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Resolution 287, resolution authorizing student union improvements project. Wheeler, Isabel were the sponsors of 287. Discussion on 287?
Chair, I just would say, when I attended FMCC, that's where I spent most of my time, so I'm glad to be here.
You are a pro-union guy.
All right. Any further discussion on 287? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Last resolution of the year is 288, resolution authorizing priority campus safety project, critical maintenance project. Wheeler and Isabel were the sponsors. Discussion on 288?
I just want to follow up with Roy. You've done an amazing job. The college is doing wonderful. Pre-ventila, attended there, it gets better and better, so I commend you. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on 288? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain, that carries. Other?
My only question, oh.
Under the Vehicle Use Tax Committee, you've added the amendment, right? The, adding the description of what the revenue start to be.
It's not in the system, but it just makes it sure.
Because how it gets done, it just got to get. Just, you know, the two last things that we were discussing before we adjourned, that I'd like some sort of direction on so that, you know, it doesn't, we don't need to discuss it on the first, is where to put all insurances, whether to combine them under finance or to have them in their, where they've been, and also what to do with committees. I think we've ruled out committees of the whole, but whether to keep them at five, put them at three, or eliminate them altogether. Because once that decision's made, I can make those changes and have that ready for the first. Actually, I'll email it out to you probably within the end of the week, so you can take a look at it. If there's any last concerns, they can always be communicated by email.
Can I just say, if we, if we have it at five, at least five opens it up to a consensus. There's more of an opportunity to having more of the fractions, if you will, more of an opportunity for more, so communications can be more open. So that's what we want. We want to be able to serve Montgomery County to the best of the ability. So I would, I would support five more than three.
Well, I, I do think we need to have more workshop settings so that we can better flush out some of the issues that are facing the current campaign. At the same time, I think that even though there's potential for a committee five to really control the whole's direction of something, that really hasn't happened too much this year on issues that have been of great importance. You know, we have the, when we had the Harrow auction, you know, we met a lot about that. Our committee was kind of fractured. We did a motion to reconsider, you know. A lot of, I think also that the rules procedure as occurring, the ones that are occurring as well as the proposed, offer the committee structure the ability to form these subcommittees so that they can have these workshop settings where you can join across, you know, I may not sit on Duke's committee, but I could be invited to that subcommittee so that we can get perspective and have a more personal relationship to design legislation.
I hope that some of you will reconsider because having a committee of five absolutely minimizes the people who are not on the committee. They show up to a meeting that's where an issue has already been decided and then to pretend to vote on it one way or the other as if it makes a difference. I think there's just something fundamentally wrong with that. So I would, I would like to see one way or the other, either three or, or the committee of the whole or the workshops, committee of the whole workshops would be fine. But to absolutely minimize people who are not on committees so that their vote doesn't matter, doesn't, doesn't have cause for them to show up even when the time comes.
Ryan and then Martin.
I guess since I'm on the other side now, I'll go, I would agree with that 100% Duke. I really don't, with a five-member committee, it just seems like an odd way of doing it coming 12 months in now. And, you know, I think we can have committee of the whole whenever, called at the chairman's request, you know, to have these sort of nine-person discussions. But to me, and after, you know, giving this some thought of going into it and coming up with these two alternatives, or this alternative of three, I think having either three or no committees at all would be the only two things I could, I could really wholeheartedly support because having a committee of the whole, you're rehashing it twice. Having a committee of five, you know, we've got the situation we've got now which really is not, it's not great and it's not terrible, but it's sort of, it defeats the purpose of a committee, in my point of view. You know, we're just, we're really rehashing it and if all five on the committee agree, why, why react on that? Take, take further action on that because if those five agree, it's all said and done. So I guess to me, it would, I would really generally either support a committee of three or no committees altogether.
My fear, I understand the whole perception of, the quorum of the legislature currently is here in committees, with a five-person committee or the full committee, a committee of the whole for budget and finance. My only fear is if we go down to three, will few legislators show up at these committee meetings because they're supposed to be informative? You know, I just don't, I just don't want people to, you know, take, take the backseat and, "Oh, I'm not on the committee," and now show up because it's only three people.
Let me see, response to that, that I did show up at a committee I was not on and was not allowed to speak during the process. You may recall that.
Okay, Barbara, Bob, Joe.
I would allow anyone to speak at any time, but one thing I would be afraid of with three people is a couple of different points. One, and whatever the majority would decide, I would go along with. But I think I have some of the same train of thoughts that Martin does. But if you think of three people in the committee deciding it, then the rest of the group could make the decision. Could be one train of thought if, if they are not included. But if, would they, would more be, have an incentive to come to the meeting and to participate if there's only three members? If there's just three, is the point of that, that more members of the legislature would be, would participate? If that's it, if, if the reason to reduce the members of the committee is to get more to participate, that's one way to get me to join in. Absolutely. Because the point in having more was to get more to participate, but if the logic was we were excluding people and that's what was so offensive, and that was never my intent, I, that's why I would be on board with the three. So I can see the logic in both the three and the five. However, the nine member, we can come to a meeting of the minds.
Bob?
I'm done.
Bob, then Joe.
I think the risk of five is that, you know, whatever's coming through the committee is paid to complete when it comes time through the, the meeting. It's already decided, it's got enough support to pass if everybody agrees. I think you, you have, I'm not sure how many committees you have, but, you know, up until last year, you supported it with 15 supervisors. Now you're supporting that same amount of committees with nine legislators, which can or cannot be overwhelming, I guess you could look at it that way. I, I think that, you know, committee size is often a discussion in any committee, that the truth of the matter is people have to work together on a committee to have the same goal and present it to the rest of the, of the group in a fashion that makes sense and it opens discussion at, at the full board meeting.
Joseph?
With five people, if one person's not here, the committee still functions. Three people, if you take one person that can't attend for whatever reason or is not able to attend, there's two people at that committee meeting. What happens? Are you going to make the decision now or after that?
You'd have a quorum.
You'd have a quorum to discuss it between two people.
And both would have to agree in order to move it, right?
Okay. That, I see the plans. That would hurt the plan number two. Any of my committee meetings, and I, I know Duke's been at some, I won't let anybody speak. I've never restricted that to just the four or five people that are on the committee. So I think, I mean, everybody here should have the opportunities, people that want to. And I've always, I've always done it that way, so. That's my, that's it.
Frankly, I think a lot of, it sounds, at least to me, that a lot of the issues we have with committees, it's not necessarily with committees, but with communication. And this first year, this first year, we've entertained a lot of special meetings, committee of the whole meetings, things that I haven't happened as much in a frequency in the past and I don't believe should happen at the same frequency in the future. But having the resolution process get a little stricter of saying 10 days and five days, you know, that gives the time for the public, the media and us representatives to do our homework on that and know what's going on. But when we are holding special meetings and doing, you know, chairman-approved resolutions, and like I said, there's, this year, there's been a lot more necessity to that. However, going forward, if we treat an emergency resolution as an emergency resolution and not just, "Oh, it didn't get here in time," I think that might eliminate some of the, this miscommunication is, thinking back, most of the issues we've had, we've had problems with because, have been because of communication and the lack thereof, and most of those issues have been acted on in a special meeting and haven't gone through the committee process. So I think of having the three-person committee, you have it and then it passes on to the full board and, or the full legislature, and the full legislature has, you know, almost a full week to review that and be informed of that with that impact statement. And I don't think it's really necessarily a committee thing, but a communication thing in that the amount of emergency resolutions that probably aren't emergencies other than an emergency and lack of planning.
Roy?
Thank you, Chair. I just kind of wanted to clarify, I think we don't want to confuse committees with workshops. The idea of the committee, my understanding, is to value or to assess the validity of a possible resolution to go to full board. The idea of a workshop is to put together said resolution. As far as the five or three, I don't have a problem with three, the only problem I, I guess I have one problem with three, and maybe we can address that in the rules procedure, is that it needs to be in public. It can't be anywhere else but there. So I would, I would support three as long as there was something stated that has to be in this bill or something to that effect.
If I could, what I heard earlier, I heard something mentioned earlier tonight about freedom of information and Robert Freeman, and we wouldn't be subject to those rules. And if you think back, and again, I'm not, I'm not calling spade a spade here, the one issue that we really had as a board where we fell apart this year on one resolution, it didn't happen right. It was, it was a bunch of people, a bunch of people, input from whoever, whenever, whatever, but it wasn't done here and openly, and then the accusation. but it wasn't done here and openly, and then the accusations would come up, who did it? Not to go there tonight, I'm just saying, but that's the one, that's the one area where we fumbled the football. I agree with Roy and I said it earlier. I'm all good with three. I just need to know when the meetings are. I want to be able to attend and I want it to be in public so that the media can be there. And if that can happen, I'm good with three.
So, if I may, is there, it sounds like there may be, is there a majority that would support a three-person committee structure if they are all subject to the same meeting publication that we have now?
That's what I'm good with.
I guess I would look for any objections.
Having three members that doesn't come to the quorum of the legislature, so would that said committee be allowed to meet and talk about items before they come to the chambers here to discuss?
If it's not a committee meeting.
I mean, there's nothing preventing three of us from getting together anywhere and discussing anything.
If it's not a committee meeting.
Just take note that the very discussion that we're having tonight is, would be a good example of what you might not have with, if the committee system remains at five. If this was being decided in a committee of five, it would already be here perhaps before you got to express your position and have everyone hear what it is. So, that's exactly what I'm trying to avoid.
Just to follow up on what Duke is saying, though, the rules procedure allow every legislature to voice their opinion after the people on the committee have expressed their experience.
At a point in time when it's moved and the argument is already over.
Well, if we know about the meeting and if we, and it's publicized and we know about it.
So, informally, raised by Dan, those in favor of having a three-person committee subject to open meetings? The only other things would be that I would follow up on that and shoot them down right away if you just want to. You, with a three-person committee working together closely like that, do we want to have committee chairpersons appointing their committee member, their joint member?
I think the chair should, my personal opinion is the chair is the chair and he should just appoint.
Why do you keep coming to town?
Huh?
Huh?
I'm just saying, the chair is the chair, whoever it is.
Why are you telling?
Huh?
Not telling.
Is that a motion to make Martin chairman?
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
So, leave it as it's then.
I agree that that should be the way it is, and the chairperson can have discussions with whoever the chair is.
That's right.
I didn't commit to anybody, so am I going to be a member for some committee?
The insurance thing, is that a make or break thing that you want to delve into?
I think with the employee insurance being on personnel committee, I'm all right with that and to follow suit, I think it should stay on business services.
Any other?
Because I think the employee insurance should stay with personnel committee and afford to follow the same structure. While I understand the concern.
All good with that, no huge objections? Okay. I'm set.
Under other, just one thing. I would like to thank Paul and his staff, those grounds for getting us moved over here, the clerk and the legislative research center, and also Dylan the floor. They came out good and I think can pass the word on to the group.
Well, thank you.
Other, please, at the January 1 meeting, dress, well, there'll be a photo, dress how you want, but there'll be a photo for the portrait or whatever, and we'll probably do two, one for the first year, one for the second year.
Just a question with that, if we're going to take a first-year photo, do we want to add, do we want to invite Alex?
If he's willing to come, I mean, that's.
He'll be lost for the record if we don't have a picture of him.
We'll have a split, like a, one over.
We'll get two, one like this and one like this.
Lastly, Jamie, congratulations on your appointment, and I just want to thank each and every one of you for allowing me the opportunity to chair this year.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You did a good job. One more thing.
I just, you know, we had some discussion going into the meeting about possibly doing something that could bring some of the people in nursing homes that could use some spirit during the Christmas time, and just wondering if, I know that Barbara has agreed with Terry and Ryan and Martin got this right this time, as many of you else that, like the twentieth time you said you would join us, I would appreciate if you.
I don't know if anybody wants to hear me say.
I just don't want a solo. Don't put me on the solo.
I, I can play the banjo, not really.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, thank you.
We're in the history books.